Number one on the agenda, consider approval of the December 2nd minutes. Does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes? Any comments or take a motion?
I would move their approval.
Clear second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no, motion carries. Second item on the agenda, consider a zoning amendment at 723 South Kansas Avenue. Suzanne, you want to?
Yes, Commissioners, as you know, when we're going through zoning amendments or just about anything that the Planning Commission reviews, we need to go through this in detail. So this evening, the 723 South Kansas Avenue is requesting a rezoning to R3 from R1. And the legal description is shown in your information. I believe we probably have some photos on the screen that show you the location with arrow map behind those. The, we need to go through the criteria that is listed here. And so we have the standard comments, which is pretty typical. All of the criteria by which an application for a zoning amendment must be judged is set forth in our zoning ordinances. And the findings must be made on each of the five following points. So we'll go through these criteria A, whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purpose of these regulations, with the city's adopted comprehensive plan and other adopted city policies, plans, programs, ordinance, rules, and regulations. The staff comments on this, where when considering a change of zoning classification for any piece of property, it is necessary to consider whether every use that would be permitted under the requested classification would be appropriate for that property in the surrounding area and not just focus on the use that the applicant indicates is intended or is presently being employed. This is because there is no way to prevent the applicant or any future owner of the property from using the site for any of the other uses permitted under the requested classification. In other words, the use of the property may not be restricted to the particular use contemplated or in existence when the request is made, but may include any use allowed within that zoning classification. There we go. The, the map that's shown here, this shows you the location on South Kansas and shows you the, the zoning map itself and everything that's around it is shown as R1. Criteria B, whether every use that would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property located in the immediate vicinity and whether the subject property is suitable for the uses to which it has been restricted. The staff comments are that R3 zoning provides for specific activities, including but not limited to. There is a lengthy list here, I won't read it all, but as you know, single-family dwellings, townhome dwellings, two-family like duplexes or multifamilies, childcare centers, daycares, group residential homes, multiple other items are allowed in an R3 zone. And any other business that would be determined by the zoning administrator to be of the same general character as those listed here. Criteria C, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services exist or can be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified. Staff comments, sewer will need to be extended to the property. What direction we extend from will depend on the development site layout. Water is available adjacent to the property. There is sanitary sewer that comes to the north end of the property, but depending on the layout, would, is why the comment is stated that we would need to determine what direction we would come from, okay? Criteria D, whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of these regulations. Staff comment, staff is not aware of any errors in the application of the zoning regulations to be corrected through the requested zoning amendment. Criteria E, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected. And if so, the nature of such change or changing conditions and whether the proposed amendment provides a disproportionately greater loss to the individual landowner relative to the public gain. Staff comments, staff does not feel that conditions have changed to prompt this proposed amendment. Some, but not, not all allowances in an R3 designation may adversely affect surrounding property relative to the public gain. You have been provided with the zoning district map, the ownership lists, and we have individuals that were notified within the number of feet around the property. We have individuals that may be here to speak regarding this zoning change. We also have someone that is here representing the applicant's request. And they are here available to speak if you would like to hear from them as well.
Any questions for Suzanne? Okay, yeah, I would like to hear from the applicant if he has anything to say. Or the representative?
Dan Harder.
Yeah, state your name. Dan Harder, need my address as well?
Yeah, please.
13395 Northwest 90th, Whitewater.
Any questions?
Dan, what are you planning to put on the property?
So the applicant would like to put a duplex on the property. This is owned by the church directly across the street, the Church of God of the Firstborn. That's directly across the street. As you can see in the floodplain map, there's a substantial part of that lot has, actually go back one. Suzanne, please, or whoever's driving. And the red line there is the floodway, which takes a significant portion of that lot. The yellow area is 100-year floodplain. And so there's a very small section of that lot that is buildable. In fact, if you look at that, some of the structures on that property are already in the floodplain. They would like, their goal is to put a duplex on, which obviously I know is really neither here nor there. But that is their intent because they have multiple families that they would like to be able to house there.
So a single duplex. Why wouldn't they go R2 instead of R3?
We sure could. And that'd be, they'd be fine, they'd be okay with that. They're looking for a duplex.
The application requested R3 is my understanding.
Yeah, we've been here before.
Yeah, that was my bad.
Yeah, that's okay. Any other questions for Dan? Thank you. Well, before we have further discussion, let's hear if we have any comments from the public. Let's open a public hearing. Yeah, come on up.
My name's Van Park, 701 South Kansas, which would be the third property north. My main concern is the sewer that runs from the church north of where the existing home is now and then goes directly to Southeast 6th. I've lived there since 91 and the city's doing really good now. But when the church is active and has a lot of people, it's backed up into my spare house 20 times, hasn't happened in five or six years.
I was gonna ask how long it's been?
I mean, sewer department's really stepped up forward. And then also an R2 isn't bad, but I don't want a sixplex there. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Yeah, come on up.
Felix Fernandez, and my address is 715 South Kansas.
Can you say your name again? I didn't catch your name.
Felix Fernandez. I'm just north of 723 on 715 South Kansas. The new two-story house that's there. And my, my main concern is too, I just want to know exactly what's going to be built there. You know, the structure of the building. You know, we give them the okay to build, they're gonna build just any cheap building, you know? I want the neighborhood to look nice. And that's my whole point of be building that big, nice house there for the whole neighborhood to look good. You know, and then another thing, my main concern too, is the sewer line. You know, when I built that house there, that whole sewer line was shot all the way through my property. You know, I, when I dig in my sewer line for my new house, I thought I was ready, but they come and tell me you have to dig some more. And you have to come dig some more. I dug almost 30 feet of my backyard just to expose that sewer line to find a good, safe spot to connect our new tap to it. And another thing, I just really, really concerned about the flood zone. Where's the water gonna go to? I know probably to the creek, but at the same time, I want to know exactly what they're gonna build there. We can build a duplex or fourplex or sixplex, but is that sewer line gonna be able to flow more housing? I finished coming from today from the sewer property down, I mean, from the sewer department down the street from us. And he said that it's real scarce that that sewer line could still hold more housing.
It had the capacity?
To have the capacity to have more sewer lines. And how they gonna put a duplex there with that flood zone there? And right now, if you see that, that house is practically right and run on my property. It's about four feet away from my property line. That building that's there now. And if you build a duplex there, you're gonna have to move it all the way up to the, to, to the north. Because where that yellow line is at, I think they can still, I'm not too sure about, you know, this area here, but if I'm not mistaken, that yellow line that's there, they can still build on it. But if you see where that existing house is at right now and how much they can still move over south to get it away from my property line, they're gonna have to build at least seven, eight feet of, of fill just to get it out of that flood zone. You know, that's why my house, I built it way up out of the flood zone, which mine wasn't in the flood zone, but you know, worst case scenario, whatever happens. But that's just my main concern there. And I'll be honest with you, I don't want no duplex beside my house. You know, I built a big, nice house there for the whole neighborhood. And then just to come build a duplex there, not knowing what's the finished product gonna be looking like? You know, that's my main concern there. And another thing is adding duplexes there is just gonna add more traffic around my property, around my neighborhood. We already have a lot of people walking up and down that street. I've already had a lot of items stolen from my house. I've had a dump trailer stolen from there, tools, bikes. Just today, I had somebody, just, just a person off the street go by there and just try and bum money off of me on a bike. I mean, I'm thinking that putting a duplex there is just not gonna be okay.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Dan, do you have site plans on how, what type of building, how you're gonna build it and where it sits?
Yes, please.
Yeah, you are correct. That house that is there is very close to the property line. And obviously, the city's gonna require that we follow the side setbacks. So that would pull it off the property line, I believe it's seven or eight feet on that side.
Probably six.
Okay. We would probably want, just so I can get equipment around it, I'd like a minimum of eight feet. I mean, I can't, my skid steer is eight feet wide, or seven feet wide, I can't go any less than that. But, but yeah, as far as the, when you get in the red zone, it would be a lot of fill, but we can't touch the red zone. That's the floodway, that is, that is untouchable. The yellow area is the 100-year floodplain. We can get a Lomar F out of that, which bring, bring some fill in and get that taken out of the floodplain. And so they would probably stay, just because of fill and cost and things of that nature, would stay there towards the north end. But yeah. And as far as the sewer goes, we're adding effectively one more family unit or one more housing unit to the sewer line. So yes, that is an additional burden, but it sounds like it's a time bomb anyway. And it's gonna have to be dealt with. Maybe that's the wrong choice of words. But, but it does sound like it's gonna have to be dealt with at some point.
Been 30 years and it's lost time.
I hear you, I hear you. And as far as, we don't have, you know, final plans or drawings, anything like that. I do believe they want to build a nice building. But, you know, it's, you have, you have a beautiful home and I, and I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think we need to, you know, really see what's the plan for that property.
He needs to come to the mic.
Yeah, yeah, can you come up here? Yeah.
And I really think, you know, it's really important that we see what's gonna be built there. You know, giving them the, like I said, giving them the okay, they're gonna just build whatever. How's the exterior gonna be? Is it gonna be a high-end duplex? Is it gonna be just something, they're gonna slap some cheap siding on it, just like something across the church, you know? You know, that's, that's my main concern. But at the same time, at the, my, my main point is I would not like a duplex beside my house due to the fact of how it's gonna look, you know, real nice house and then all of a sudden, just nowhere on the street is duplexes. There's auto rest or apartments down the street that look real trashy. There's another one down the street that looks real trashy. You know, what's this gonna look like in 15, 20 years? You know, that's my main concern. Another thing, Mr. Dan said, right now it's got a little house there and they're just gonna add another house to it. But how many bedrooms, how many people are gonna be occupying the house? Right now, that house has been vacant for many years. You know, what is that sewer line gonna be able to capable of, the capacity it can, it can do? You know, the guy that I, Nathan that I talked to today, another thing, they're gonna see how they're gonna be able to get a sewer line over there because according to what I understood, they won't let them tap into the manhole that's there, that's on my property. Because that manhole that's there now is actually like Susan? Susan mentioned that's on the north side, which is on my property.
Yeah, thank you.
As far as the sanitary sewer is concerned, if the individuals are having problems with the sewer, then we definitely can have our sewer maintenance staff review that. If we need to do improvements to the sewer line, because it is, if there's backups and things, we can handle that with our maintenance staff and that would be the expectation. As if there is a manhole, which there is, there's a manhole at the end of that line and it's there on, at the property line, we can connect to a manhole. We don't like to do it, but we do often do a tap to a manhole, especially when it's at the end of the line. So that would not be a problem.
And I was also interested in the, it's been five years since the problem showed up on the sewer for the church. The city's done a lot on sewer rehab
We have.
in the past few years, so that has helped downstream problems. Just to say that. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
And the only reason I even consider bringing this to you guys is because of the zoning change in Fox Ridge. I know spot zoning is not something the commission likes to do. And if it hadn't been for the zoning change here at Fox Ridge, I wouldn't have even bothered you with it. And so that's, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Can I ask him a question? Dan, are you planning to remove the existing structure? Okay.
Yeah. For sure, the house and probably, I don't see there's any way that garage or shop could stay either. I think it's gonna be a complete scrape.
So you're removing a very old structure, multiple old structures on the property and gonna replace it with a new, newly-built duplex? Okay.
Any questions, comments?
I'd like to see that changed to an R2 from an R3 personally. Same.
Well, is that the general consensus? I would agree with that with potentially.
And I don't see any problems after that. I just, R3 scares me.
Without saying that, I, I would say we would consider that. Since that's not in front of us, I believe we have to do that at the next meeting, correct? Because that's a change of zoning, we'd have to have a public hearing again.
I think.
Our attorney isn't here.
We don't have the attorney here. What you could do is you could state that if you are not in favor of the R3, you could state that. But if you are saying that you would approve an R2 or you would be favorable towards the R2, then we would.
I think, I think I would like to say we would be willing to consider the R2. There may be additional restrictions on not, on limiting usage on the R2 also. If you're specifically wanting a duplex, I think we could probably discuss that. I think that's worth a discussion. The, I think from my personal standpoint, getting rid of an old prop, an old building, structure, seems like that would be best for everybody. I don't like spot zoning myself, but, you know, changing these, but I do think that's worth considering for sure.
And remember, you're making a recommendation that goes to the city commission as well.
Right. So I guess that, do we need a motion for that?
Well, you, you're either going to make a recommendation to approve or to deny.
Deny, yeah. So we would have to deny this request.
That's what you're wanting to do.
Yeah, that's what we'd have to do.
But I could make a motion too. If I wanted to, up to vote to, if the city approve, if the city commission approves, move it from an R3 to an R2. Put that to vote.
Yeah, I think what we have to do is start the process over again. I'm not 100% because I'm not the attorney, but.
Based on the last time this happened, that's what we had to do. So I'm thinking that too.
So we need a motion to deny the requested zoning. So I'll, I'll move that based on the fact that it would not satisfy condition E because it changes the area in a way with a, that's not positive for the public gain. Is that, is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you. Okay, next item. Consider zoning amendment at 810 and 820 Industrial Road. Ready to do some more talking?
Yes. Okay, so similar to the last one, it's a zoning change and we need to go through the criteria. This, this application has been submitted by the city of Newton. The property is owned by the city of Newton. I'm wearing two hats on this one because I'm representing the city, but I'm also providing you with the information in the staff comments. There are two lots that are located in the industrial park on the northeast corner of Southeast 9th and Industrial Drive. And the request is to change it from I2 to I3, which is a heavy industrial. So the criteria items, again, I'm not gonna reread them. I will just say criteria A because you're well aware of what these are, okay? Criteria A and then the staff comments, when considering a change of zoning classification for any piece of property, it's necessary to consider whether every use that would be permitted under the requested classification would be appropriate for that property in the surrounding area and not just focus on the use that the applicant indicates is intended or presently being employed. This is because there's no way to prevent the applicant or any future owner of the property from using the site for any of the other uses permitted under the requested classification. In other words, anything that is shown in this zoning classification and the zoning code could be, could occur here. So criteria B, whether every use that would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property located in the immediate vicinity and whether the subject property is suitable for the uses to which it has been restricted. Staff comments, I3 zoning provides the specific activities, including but not limited to. And there are multiple items that are listed here. And when it has the PP behind it, remember that is a primary permit that for I3, you could have anything from an ag use all the way up to a heavy, heavy industrial use like petroleum refining, ready-mix concrete, asphalt plants, storage garages, warehouses, everything, okay? Then criteria C, whether the sewer and water facilities are adequate and the staff comments are all public utilities are existing and they are adjacent to the site. Criteria D, whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of the regulations. Staff is not aware of any errors in the application of the zoning regs. Criteria E, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected. And if so, the nature of such change or changing conditions and whether the proposed amendment provides a disproportionately greater loss to the individual landowners relative to the public gain. Staff is not aware of changing or changed conditions in the area and does not believe the amendment would create a greater loss to the individual landowners relative to the public gain. And also the comment, please note that I3 is relatively new zoning, a new zoning designation. Since its adoption in 2022, several properties near the applicant's site have been approved as an I3 zoning district. You've been, you've received all of the information in your packet that is listed. And if we could go to the, it's, you can see everything around it is zoned as I2. Can we go to the aerial?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you'd bear with me, I'd like to represent the applicant. So.
Hold on, are there any questions for Suzanne before she becomes so indifferent?
The city of Newton is working with an industrial prospect that is wanting to lease the property. And the, the prospect needs the property to be an I3. We are, they are, it would be a, a temporary ready-mix concrete plant that would be located here. And in order to do that, it needs to be the I3 zone. This would be something that's considered by the city commission at a future date, but it is contingent upon this zoning changing. However, the city, we are not looking at a temporary request. We want this to be long-term. And we may actually come with the other properties that are surrounding it that the city still owns and request I3 on those, so we don't have to keep coming back on these things. So that is the request and that is the why.
Can you, what is currently zoned I3 now around?
It would be nothing but, well, the property immediately to the south across there, yes. There's two or three lots in there that are owned by Lou Rebelli. And he is building warehouses, a warehouse in there. And he is performing, he has a special use permit to a temporary one to crush rock at that location. And then immediately farther south, that's off this aerial on the south side of Southeast 12th, is an I3 zone that is owned by GAF. There's 230 acres there. You know what? I just told you wrong because the Rebelli property, did we rezone it to I3? Hang on, I need to look at that. He has a special use permit for the rock crushing, but now I'm questioning, I don't believe that he.
I thought we rezoned some of Rebelli's properties that were on the north side of that road.
Well, yeah, it's off this chart and those.
Yeah, I thought we did that.
Yes, those are those BNSF certified sites. Sorry, if you hang on just a second, I can answer that on this one. I'm thinking this site may not be, now that I've told you that. Yeah, no. The site to the south is not, I'm just remembering the special use permit. It was a temporary special use permit for rock crushing. So the site to the south is not an I3. But everybody was again notified that is within the, the boundaries that are required by law for notification. And there could be individuals here that would like to speak to this this evening.
Any questions for Suzanne? Anyone here want to speak to this? That ends the public hearing.
Okay.
Can I say you have the best handwriting ever?
What?
With a kid who got a D in handwriting?
Oh wow, that was my, that was my sloppy writing. And again, you would be, when you determine how you want to vote on this zoning amendment, this is a recommendation that you're making to the city commission and it will go to them at their February 24th meeting, I believe it is, for consideration. Is that right? 25th, sorry, whatever the Tuesday is.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we recommend approval to the city commission of this zoning amendment from I2 to I3. It looks like it's consistent with the future city plans for that area. And it looks like it would be the proper place for that, so I think it's consistent.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All that is in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, consider preliminary plat for Cornelius Gardens.
Okay, Commissioners. Oh, wait a minute. Hang on, I got the wrong papers. Okay. The plat for Cornelius Gardens, this is a, a different, a different type of plat in a different area. It's an existing area of town. And we have a copy of the plat on the screen. This is just south of First Street. And the preliminary plat, as you. And the preliminary plat, as you know, is the one that comes in the beginning that has the utility shown, topographic information. And they submit this to staff and then staff reviews, provides comments. And these comments are all in line with the city subdivision regulations. And this was submitted and we provided comments that are, that are shown in your packet. This is for your consideration and if the commission is satisfied that the requirements of all the applicable subdivision regulations have been or will be met by the developer, you may approve the preliminary plat, including any required and requested changes. So the changes that, we have multiple changes that we have suggested as staff that shows the comments here in your, in your packet. And I'm not going to read these all in detail unless you would, would like me to. But they're specifically talking about locations that probably the most important one, I would say, is we're asking them to provide the locations of the water and sewer systems that are shown on the property along Muse Southeast 2nd, South Pine. The applicant may want to come forward and describe to you what they're doing on the property because they're moving existing structures around. And then different lots are needing to be replatted. They're trying to put it back to a more historical locations, if you will. And it will be important for us to be able to line up utilities, to be able to provide for the different structures. And so those comments, there's multiple comments about water and sewer. There are some comments about contours and information that would need to be provided in that context. And then some information about the existing structures and labeling on the plat itself. And then horizontal locations that are shown, just giving different comments about showing flow lines, water mains, culverts, underground wiring, different things that all of the information that is shown in the area that exists today needs to be shown on that preliminary plat. That's important to us. And then on the final plat, kind of all the noise of the past goes away and we look at where we're heading for the future on the final plat. So the additional information is requested. They've made some of the changes. We asked for them to provide that. And so I would turn it over to you if you would like the applicant to speak to you this evening as well.
I just had one question. When a preliminary plat is submitted, so they did not submit a utility plan or a drainage plan, is that right?
Not initially. I don't know if it's been provided since then. Is that right, Dan?
Oh, yeah, yeah, come on.
Good evening. Dan Garber, 2908 North Plum in Hutchinson and 511 North Poplar here in Newton with Garber Surveying. And David and Lily and Quering are the applicants and they're in the audience this evening and we'll pass along to them any of the difficult questions. I noticed that the preliminary plat on the presentation is not the most recent. So we are in agreement with the staff comments. We have addressed those, put them on the plat. I'm sorry, Justin isn't here this evening to. But I do have a paper copy here if you want to see it. There was a question on this one as to where the sewer line for lot four would hook in and then lots lots two and three. So lot two currently, the house at 419 East First and 415 East First, those both drain north across the street. There's a sewer line out in First Street. And those both drain there. There's a cleanout on the west side of 419. 115 and 123 Muse Avenue, both the sewer lines went to the east. And what we discovered is east across the street near the, near the entrance to the church, there's a sewer manhole. And those two houses apparently drained across the street to that lateral line by that manhole. The Querings have moved house 15, 115 down. And they've moved house 123 back behind the buildings, the newly platted building setback line and merged those together. They've got a project going there to combine those two homes into one remodeled and relocated home. They have removed a lot of those overhead electric lines that you see on the preliminary plat. And they have installed an underground electric line up the new utility easement on the east side of lot four and kind of the middle of lot three. And it'll service all of those properties and get rid of all the unsightly overhead lines. We addressed elevations by putting spot elevations to show the top of curb and flow line of the gutter around that block. So all the properties, you'll see on your drawing, there were, there were cleanouts on lots three and four that drained to the south to that sewer line in second. And so lot four will be able to use that service line. The one that's in lot three will be abandoned and that house will continue to go east across Muse Avenue. I think that we have addressed all of the staff comments and sent those to Justin last week. But I would stand for any questions that you might have.
I just had questions about the general plan to start. So like lot one, lot two. Is there a bigger plan for this whole area? Like, is it housing or?
I would probably need to let the owners speak to that. Yeah.
When we first started this project.
What's your name?
I'm David Quering.
David.
So I guess my address is 1222 North Calhoun in Liberal, Kansas. So news to us that we're developers. And news to us this property wasn't planted to begin with. So this is all kind of confusing, startling to begin with. So our objective initially was, one, get rid of that parking lot. That blows up the neighborhoods, unsightly is not being used. So that's already been accomplished. All that asphalt from that old hospital parking lot is gone. And so, and beyond that, to restore the neighborhood to the character that it was is simple residential neighborhood. So specific plans are to restore the four, I don't know which lot number it is, but 419 and 415 together make a lot. And together with the old 115 lot, to restore that corner to what it used to be back in 1874 or whenever. And that property that Lilian's grandfather bought. So, so the plan, long-term plan is to move 115 off of there. That's already happened. Also to move 415 off of that lot, possibly down to Second Street. That's some distance in the future, yet. The, the west lawn, which is the old parking lot, which is becoming trees and, and garden and that kind of thing, could accommodate another home on the corner there where there once was a nice home. That's, that's not a very specific plan, it's just kind of a possibility. So, and then you heard about the way that the two homes were being moved together. If you drive by there, you can see it. There's a new basement there. Those homes are sitting next to each other and it's in progress getting those joined. That's really about it. Essential objective was to get rid of parking lot, accomplished that. And second objective is to restore it to a residential neighborhood that has got some purty to it.
So lot one and lot two there on First Street.
Yeah.
Combined to one lot? No, it's like two separate lots. Yeah, there's a lot line. I see it, but I didn't know what, through all these changes, what they were doing.
I see, I see the lot line between one and two, but it's two, actually two thirds the width of, or the length of First Street? Is that what I'm seeing? Is there a reason why that didn't become another lot where the other two houses are? Because it looked like they're sufficient enough to be three lots across the, I'm just curious.
The owners have no desire to create another site in there.
Okay.
They're going to own the corner lot, 415.
Okay. Gotcha. And the, the plat shows two house number 120s? Are they, there's in the lower left?
Oh, 126 and 120.
Okay, I'm just, I didn't know if that was one property, which is the reason why I was asking that.
Yeah.
That was fixed on our plat.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Well, so it's not part of the plat, but we also.
No, no, I just, yeah, I was trying to get a flavor for that and and really commend you for what you're doing in that neighborhood. Just two blocks north.
Looking good.
Appreciate that. Have other people call us insane.
Well, that may be another conversation, but.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Dan. Any other discussion?
I'm ready to make a motion in favor of the preliminary plat encompassing the, the comments from the city to make sure that they are incorporated in the preliminary plat.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of a preliminary plat for Cornelius Gardens, say yes.
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 Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
I'm gonna drive by now that I know this.
I have to come look now, yeah. No, you're doing a great thing over there. Yeah, you're doing a great thing. Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda. Consider a variance setback appeal of Lonnie Gurr at 1712 Cypress Lane.
Yes, commissioners, the request has been in this R1 zoning to, which currently would require a rear setback of 25 feet. The request is to have a zero setback from the rear property line. And we went through the requirements for legal publication and notification. All those have been met. And then we have the staff comments to the standards for granting variances that we should go through. There is a, we've got pictures in the packet. We've got pictures on the screen. There you go. There's the location, just kind of on the corner there. And the rear lot would be to the right of the screen on the orange area. And you can see that on your drawings that the applicant has provided in the packet as well, showing where he's wanting to put a garage so, or a shop building. So the standards for granting variances, standard A, the variance requested arises from such conditions which are unique to the property in question and which are not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which were not created by an action of the property owner or the applicant. The applicant's commentary is the positioning the building 10 feet from the property line would result in jeopardizing the life of one pin oak and two cypress trees, all that are 60 feet tall. His tree consultant concluded that there is only one location to put up the shop that would not impact the trees. Standard B, the granting of a variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, nor will it confer upon the applicant any special privilege denied by this ordinance to other land or structures in the same district. The applicant's commentary is the shop would be located on the east property line, which is also the back alley. Neighbors also have privacy fences, so this should minimally, minimally impact any sightlines. Standard C, the strict application, the provisions of this ordinance from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the applicant. The commentary from the applicant, the options for shop placement are restricted to one location due to the number of large trees on my property. Standard D, the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, or welfare. Applicant's commentary, the variance will not have any adverse impact on neighbors since it will be located in my backyard along the alley with virtually no visibility to neighbors and street traffic. Standard E, granting the variance requested would not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the ordinance. The applicant's commentary, because the requested placement of the shop, visibility will be minimal to neighbors and the general public. And it will not impact any easements. It will not affect neighboring property values, but will preserve the beauty of the neighborhood by not having to eliminate mature trees. The, the thing that you should notice in this is running north and south along the east property line is an unopened alley. It is, it's not paved, it's not gravel, it's dirt. And that's when he refers to along the alleyway. That's what he's talking about. Staff comments is the planning commission can either approve or deny, or reduce the variance request. But he is requesting zero, a zero foot setback. And I believe the applicant is here.
A couple of questions. So what is the current setback? I wasn't, it said 10 foot and 25 foot.
Yeah.
10 foot?
I believe that it's 25 foot, but.
Okay. Okay, the other question, do we know in the alley, is it, are there utilities in?
There's no, there's no water or sewer in the alley. There is power and it's on the east side of that north-south alley. There is gas and it's along the west side of the north-south alley. But it's within the alley. Not.
How wide's the alley, where it was?
Says 35 foot on.
Does it say on?
I guess, oh, I guess I see it right there on the hand drawing. Yep.
Good catch. You do this for a living.
Yeah, I see.
You see things.
Once in a while. Is this the corner house?
Yes.
So does it come in from Cypress? It's supposed to be Terrace Drive.
Well, Cypress is running north and south there.
It is there.
It runs north and south terraces along the north.
It's supposed to be Terrace, I think. Don't you enter the garage through Terrace?
I'm sorry.
Do you not enter into your driveway through Terrace Drive?
It is confusing. We, we enter our driveway off of Terrace.
Okay, so this should be Terrace right here then, because this says driveway entrance, right?
Yeah. Yeah, Cypress, if you.
So it says Terrace.
Will that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. That, you are correct, Greg.
I might have made a mistake there.
That's on you.
Yes.
It is on me. There's a lot of.
Your lawn is.
I am.
Okay, thank you.
I am.
I was confused. I'm very small-minded. Stickler for details.
When they designed my side and backyard, they did not think of everybody, anybody ever wanting to build a shop back there. And yeah, the pin oaks and the cypress are kind of all in my way.
Yep. Mr. Gurr, while you're at the microphone, if you just identify yourself and your address.
Yeah, just.
1712 Cypress Lane.
So is this truly going to be a shop or, I mean, so you're not looking for, or you're going to access it through the alleyway with a door on the back or is it truly a shop?
It will, it will be accessed from the, the west of the, the shop. The, the back wall will be solid. There will be no windows or doors in that.
So we don't have to worry about turning radius or anything in the alley or anything?
Well, yeah, and that alley is 35 feet wide, not whatever that means to you guys, but no. My entire access would be from the, the west side of the shop. And the shop is only going to, it's just used for putting a lawnmower in and garden tools and flowering stuff, garden stuff.
You're gonna just put it on a slab?
It would be a slab. In fact, we would still be drilling holes. Tree guys believe that if I trench, I'll, I'm only 18 feet away from my cypress trees. And cypress trees, if you know how they are, they're, they're sprawling, they're not down. So we'd be drilling our eight inch holes every four feet, all the, all the way around the perimeter, all four sides and then, and then. And then, and then pour a slab on top of that. And then framing from that point up.
On your picture, so the dimensions of your shop, sixteen?
Sixteen, east and west, twenty two, north and south.
I believe the alley is only thirty feet wide here.
Thirty feet.
Still a wide alley.
It is a wide alley.
Yeah, there would be no utilities. The gas line, like you said, is on the western side, but it's like thirty inches to forty inches on the inside of the alley.
I believe the alley is a little bit different than some alleys because that's the location where two plats came together. And so they were kind of making up the gap, if you will.
Yeah.
And the reason why I was asking that was to make sure it wasn't an encroachment on other structures.
Yeah.
You know, we have, we have granted similar zero yard, rear yard setbacks when, when a shop or a garage couldn't be, you know, placed there. Again, that would be the furthermost edge of your building. So if you had an overhang of the roof, it could not reach over the property line. Are you, you know what I'm trying to say?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, just, just making that awareness.
Yeah, I hadn't, I can, I can pull my slab in. I'd like to put a twelve inch overhang on it.
Yeah, no, I'm just, as we're having a conversation before you start taking it through the process.
And, and forgive my ignorance, but the nature of a variance like this, if he or a future owner of the property would tear that structure down, could they build it again in that same spot? Or does that variance attach just to the structure?
I think it should, it should be attached to the structure itself, yes.
Yeah, any other requests would have to come back.
Okay.
And you could make that clear if you choose to approve it. Make it clear that it would be only for this structure. And if it was ever removed, then they would not be allowed to do it. And make sure that the eaves do not hang over.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Gurr? Thank you.
You bet.
I think this requires a public hearing too, right?
Yes. And, and everybody was notified.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing. Let's talk. I'll close the public hearing. Okay. Any discussion?
We haven't done one of these zero setbacks since I've been on the committee. So I appreciate knowing that it has been done in the past. I, my, my instant reaction was, can't do that, but.
Yeah, this seems a little different situation here. Could you step back up? I have one other question. I know you want to save your trees. Is there any other setback, like a five foot or anything you could get by with to get a little bit off the property line there?
Well.
I know you don't, you can't probably go ten or fifteen or anything. I've gone to three, I've talked about three foot before with people.
I mean, I'm at your mercy. If you say three feet is where your, your limitations are, then I'll probably narrow the shop down a little bit. Because the tree guys that I've talked to, Ryan Tree, and then I'm sure you might know Don Esch here, old guy. He, he, it concerns him that way. I could lose both trees if I get too much, too much closer to them. And they, yeah, they're both Cypress and then the other one's a pin oak. And I know a pin oak's got straight down roots. But the Cypress trees are my biggest concern. So, yeah, I mean, if I need to go three feet, I'll probably narrow my shop up.
Okay, yeah, you have something?
I just would comment that I did check with our horticulture staff and they said definitely Cypress trees are ones that we would like to retain in the community. They were not concerned about pin oaks just because of the disease, but Cypress.
Should have been burr oaks instead of pin.
Yeah.
I wasn't around there planting trees in nineteen seventy.
Right.
So, Mr. Gurr, for, you're wanting a one inch overhang on the eaves, I mean, a one foot, twelve inch overhang in the eaves, you could move in one foot without, without shrinking your shop?
I could prob, yeah, I think a foot, I'm, I'm going to be, that would work. I could still leave it sixteen feet wide and move it, move it in or move it to the west a foot. So my overhang would be then perfectly flush with privacy fence or private, yeah. So, but, yeah, they, they did, they did a great job of designing our place, except the shop. There's just, there's no room. There is no room. So, thanks, guys.
Yep, thank you. Any other discussion?
You know, I like, I like the concept of, of a little more than a foot off of the property line because you don't want to get it all framed up and someone didn't frame it right and you're six inches over a property line and then you've got to do something. So, you know, two or three feet in would, would probably be a preference for me. And I don't mean to take up your square footage, but I want to be able to answer this. But we have done something to zero, meaning that, that we did require that they match the eve with the, with the property line or did not encroach over the property line, if, if I remember that.
I would be more than willing to, to pull it in the, the same distance as my overhang. I haven't decided if it's twelve inches or sixteen, but I, that would be what you would suggest. I would, I would pull it in that distance without a problem.
This, the setback would be to the overhang.
The setback would have to be to the overhang.
You would state that in your approval, that the setback is to the overhang.
Yeah, any overhang.
Any overhang of any kind.
Yeah, including guttering.
Including guttering.
Anything, yeah. Property line's vertical, straight up and down.
Mr. Chairman, given the nature of the, of the lot and the, and the trees on the lot, I would recommend a, a zero variance be granted on this property to the outermost edge of the, of the structure and its attachments.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, Dan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Good luck, my friend.
Yep, keep that overhang on your property. We've got lasers.
Yes, we do. You bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurr, just make sure you will need to touch base with our office again for your permitting. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I guess number six, sign ordinance is off?
We would like to table that item to the next meeting, please.
Thank you. Review comp plan, is that?
Do we need to make a motion to table then?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not used to this yet. It's only been a year.
You're doing great.
I'm making, I'm making a motion that we table number six, discuss the sign ordinance and muriels to next month.
Is that enough time?
Do I need to have the date or do you want to go further out?
No, next month is good.
Yeah, next month.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Rebecca.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to review both these items that you have, seven and eight, and I'm kind of in a single swoop here. You do have physical copies of your comprehensive plan in front of you. Quite a large document. As you all might remember, in May of twenty twenty four, we, this body completed a multi-month review of this exact plan, which we call Read Newton. And it was deemed during that review that most of the items that are included, they'd already been addressed. They were ongoing things that we were never going to finish, but we were just, you know, very glad to do and have them marked off. Or they were things that we were going to complete by the end of last year. So that's where we stand today. However, by Kansas State statute, you might remember that the planning commissions are required to review their comprehensive plans annually to make any amendments, extensions, or additions as you might deem appropriate. Just so you know, the way those are done is in the same way that you adopt the original plan, which means you'll, would need to have a hearing and a resolution and a few other things. So the first item is if we did need to amend it and we heard, we haven't heard any amendments to date on it, we would need to take that up. So this will be a two motion piece. One is to review it and either retain it or start a process to amend it. But I do want to continue on what we had heard from this body as we went through that review and we kind of seemed like we were very completed. In order for us to move forward with the continued growth of the community, we have drafted a request or proposal that is in your packet to engage a professional consultant to prepare for us a ten-year comprehensive plan. While there's an expectation that this plan will see a lot longer than ten years, this reduction to a ten-year timeframe instead of the twenty-year plan that you have in front of you, hopefully will provide us with a sooner formal overview, as we noticed in this one, twenty years seems to be a long time to have that formal process. So currently where we stand, we would like to issue this RFP starting tomorrow, February fourth. And we'd keep it open for what comes out to be a little bit more than six weeks, at which time there is a comprehensive selection committee. It's noted in the RFP. They'll meet to review the proposals. That committee will be comprised of six members, one which is the city commissioner and two from the planning commission, which we'll probably send out. We don't, we'll have time to make sure that everyone is aware of those opportunities if they would like to serve. And then three city staff members. The city staff members would be the city manager and myself and Justin Erickson, our planning and zoning administrator. That selection committee then would meet at least twice, once to review the RFPs and one more time in the process. There might be additional opportunities for input, but it would be at least a two, two meeting commitment from whoever would be willing to serve on that. So our ask of you tonight would be, one, to make a formal motion that you've reviewed the current comprehensive plan. And then, in the other way, just let us know that you've reviewed the RFP so that we could go ahead and pose to get proposals and start on a new comprehensive plan that will be quite an involved process. And I'm very happy to stand for and go over the request for proposals if you like in more detail.
It seems that we just looked through it all, so I don't know if anyone has any additional comments. No? So a motion to accept?
That, that you've reviewed the current comprehensive plan, yes, please.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the current comprehensive plan as we viewed it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. And carries. Then the RFP, I looked this over. I thought it looked really good.
Justin did a really, really great job on this.
Yeah, he covered a lot of stuff. I had one question. I was just wondering, the age of AI, is, is there something with AI that fits into this to look at for city for, like techni, technological advances under task five? I just wondered. I didn't know.
Under task five?
I'm gonna have something.
Sorry. So you're looking at the existing future facilities, programs, and staffing?
Yeah, at the very bottom, it's just provide recommendations for technological advancements. It seems like every, every time you turn around now, they're talking about AI. I figured somehow that might fit into something under that.
Wouldn't that fall under smart city technology in parentheses?
See, that's what we're looking for, recommendations. We're not looking for the answers. I think somehow it's got to, it got to involve the utilities. I mean, as we see the electrical demand of AI and the demands of future industry, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I don't know. But that'll probably be in that. But no, I, I agree. I think the RFP looks really good.
We have not as an organization yet gone out and said anything in any sort of formal way about the use of AI yet because we're working on an internal policy. We're hoping to have that policy and then moving forward, we can identify those things and make sure they fit our policy, but without having one. We're not saying it for organs, but we're trying.
Well, and it can always be discussed as you go.
It's a great, great suggestion. I'm definitely writing it down, both how to utilize it in the planning process and then, of course, the utility usage.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Cool. Is there any other comments on the RFP? RFQ, I'm sorry.
I would move that we go out with the RFP tomorrow.
Cool.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
And then if anybody, we'll still send out an email to anybody that might not be here tonight. But if there's any of you that are wanting to serve on that selection committee, just, you know, please let us know either now or.
Oh, by the way, if you want on, say it now.
Yeah.
There could be a run on.
We can appoint Arlen, too. When does that start?
Well, we would be reviewing the RFPs in about six weeks. I'm gonna have to find my calendar. There, we have a date that we, that we marked when the RFPs would be due.
I think it said April one, maybe?
Yes, I think you're right.
Yes.
So you'd be meeting in April sometime.
And then there'd be a follow-up meeting at some point, but that's to be determined, so. It's at least two meeting commitments.
And that's for review of the RFPs. You will all be involved in the comp plan update once a consultant is selected. So what we're asking for is people to serve on the committee for the selection of the consultant.
I'd be happy to serve, but if somebody else wants it.
I have a graduating senior. I'm going to guess I'm going to be busy April, May.
Yeah, and I probably need to stay out of it for now because we might go af, my firm might go after it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of town for three weeks in April, so.
We have one volunteer.
Will you be around in April?
Depends on the day. As long as you're gone in April.
Yeah.
Okay, because you're the one that picks all the dates and I'm out of town. Did I say that out loud? But, yeah, there, I mean, we just need to.
All right. Greg.
I am in town some.
Okay.
I, June, June, last day of June, and I'm free for a lot of stuff. Other, other.
Yeah.
We could check with Arlen or Jay.
Yeah.
We got a few weeks, right?
Yeah, we do. We have a few weeks and we can certainly follow up with an email to check schedules.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That's why I say I have maybe some stuff, so I don't know.
Okay, moving on, old business, any old business?
I don't think so.
Think this is enough? Anything?
Nope.
Okay. New business? Cool. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Yes.